Addison Northwest School District Annual Meeting. I am Tom Spencer, I am the moderator. We have two articles tonight. The first one is to elect the officers, which is moderator, clerk, and treasurer. As moderator, I am not the boss of this group, I just make things run smoothly, that's my job. This is not a school board meeting, it's your meeting, it's the public's meeting. The school board are sitting up here where they're a little more available to answer questions. But, this is your meeting, and I'm going to open it by, starting with Article One. Our clerk that was elected last year has chosen not to continue. So, we need a new clerk before we proceed any further. So, I would ask for a nomination for clerk? Yes?
I'd like to nominate Tara Brooks for our clerk.
Tara Brooks? Does anyone second?
I'll second that.
Alright. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of Tara Brooks as our clerk? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, aye, spear to have it. So, the reason I did that, because when we elect a moderator, I can't proceed over an election that I might be nominated for. So, I now ask for a nomination for moderator?
I'll nominate Tom Spencer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? No? Then I'll ask Tara to come up and ask for a vote.
My moment of fame. All in favor, elect Tom as moderator?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, congratulations.
We now need a nomination for treasurer.
I nominate Greg Birdy.
Do I have a second? Did you get those names?
George is first.
George is second.
Whenever you make a motion, make sure you give your name, so the secretary, the clerk can record it. All those in favor of Greg Birdy? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, we've taken care of Article One. Article Two is to hear and act upon the reports of the Addison Northwest School Districts. So, basically, I don't know how many of you have got a copy of this, or have available yourself a copy online. This article basically is you accept the report, not that you agree with it, or any parts of it, but that you have accepted it, or agree that you have already had access to it. Once we've had a motion to accept it and second it, before we vote, I will open it up for discussion. I'm going to ask the Chair of the Board to start a presentation. So, at the moment, I would like to have a motion to accept the report.
I move to accept the report as written, this is Lori Childers.
Do I have a second?
Second, John Stroud.
We have a motion to accept and second. So, I'm now going to turn it over to Sue Rakowski, our Board Chairman.
Hello, everyone, I'm Sue Rakowski, I'm the Chair of the School District Board, and actually, Tom is going to begin the presentation, we kind of have it split up here. He's going to do the first few slides. But, this presentation is essentially a summary of what is in your books.
She just told you the first slide.
Oh. I was having trouble advancing. Oh, well, we have to get back online here, sorry.
So, I'm Tom Borchardt, I'm the Vice Chair. The presentation has three basic parts. We're going to talk about the things that the school boards accomplished this year, we're going to talk about our proposed budget, and, you know, some of the kind of core aspects to that. And then, we're going to talk about the, Sue's going to talk about the budget, and then, Christina's going to talk about the various things we're asking you to vote on, because for a variety of reasons, we're asking you to vote on seven or eight different, six, six different articles, which is a lot. So, as Sue said a second ago, what we're talking about here are basically the highlights of what are in this book here, which is at front, and is also on the district website. So, if you, if you're bored and looking around, and you want to go to the A&amp;WSD.org, and it's, there's a link right there. So, among the major accomplishments of 2018-19, we have to begin with our new superintendent. As you may remember, right after the annual meeting last year, Joanne Canning told us that she was leaving to go to Dubai, I think?
Kuwait.
Kuwait. So, we hired Sheila in the latter part of the year. She is the, Sheila is the former Curriculum Director at Harwood, and we are really happy to have her with us, she's been doing a great job. One of the main focuses of the year, certainly for a lot of us, has been focusing on the improvement of the facilities through safety, efficiency, and maintenance renovations that have been done through a performance contract that the public voted on last spring, which I'll talk about in a second. As you can see up here, we've got a substantial fusion program, which provides summer and remedial courses and enrichment programs throughout the year. There are well over 100 elementary students who are participating in this at VUES, it's been a great program for us. And, I read here that we are one of only a few districts in Vermont with 100% compliance for our special ed evaluations, which is an excellent thing. In terms of, so just kind of continuing along here, this is the first year of our cooperative food service program that we're, so as a unified district, we have, the food services being run by a single group that is running our food service, and also the Mount Ave District Food Service. This is the first year of, that we've had this completely done, and we've seen a pretty substantial increase in the amount of utilization, particularly at the high school.
Great. Sorry. And now I have to join Xfinity again.
I'll just cancel.
I can just cancel that.
We've also, particularly during the growing season, and I'll have to do it again, sorry, just somebody wave to me next time it happens, because I'm trying to talk to you and not Particularly during the growing season, we were able to use an awful lot of produce from local growers, which I think is a great part of the food to schools programming. As many of you may have heard, in the last, I don't know, couple months, there's been a lot of, there's been a number of programs on VPR about the need for the state schools to test for lead in the water. We have been, I think, ahead of the curve on that, we were beginning to talk about this last spring. We've tested all the taps in all four schools in the district, and we fortunately have no lead in our water, which is an excellent thing. And, as you can see here, we are on board to have a regular review of our policy manual. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about our, the Facilities Capital Repairs, Energy and Conservation, and School Security Plan. So, last year, as you may remember, we put forward a $7.6 million bond, which you voted for. A lot of that has gone towards improving energy usage, particularly in the high school, but there were parts of it that were focused on all four schools throughout the district. The really great news, it is nearly complete, it is on time and on budget. There has been substantial changes to what has gone on in terms of energy use at the high school. As you can see here, we've converted to a hot water system, there are new boilers here, and also at VUES, which are using gas as opposed to oil, and there are LED lighting throughout all four schools. So, yes, I've said the gas conversion, sorry. In addition to the energy usage, there were a number of other projects that were, that ended up getting put in along with that. We ended up being able to repair a lot of the roofs, roof sections at the high school. We were able to substantially improve the security systems throughout all four schools, and increase and install, in fact, fire suppression systems at VUES. Shockingly, there was no fire suppression system, which we found out when we were doing, you know, surveys for the project itself. As well as kitchen upgrades, particularly at VUES and at Ferrisburg. You can see, or you cannot see here, we also put up a solar array, a relatively small solar array, that would, but it would use the, it would, it will provide enough energy to provide the need, the energy, the electrical needs for the high school. And, I'm not sure if you can see this here, but this is a, this is a chart of the energy usage, elec, sorry, not energy, electrical usage at the high school.
Do you want me to talk this one time?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm George Lawrence, Representative from Addison. And, so basically, these are charts showing electrical usage for the high school, and it's kind of a yellow, VUES in the gray, Ferrisburg is orange, and Addison is in blue. And, we're looking at monthly kilowatt hours used versus monthly usage, basically from August of 2014 to December of 2018. So, each one of these humps represents essentially years' worth of electrical usage. And, it's pretty typical for schools to have, you know, more during the school year, and then it drops down in July and August. So, each one of these dips represents a July-August time period. And, the nice thing is that the high school was, you know, showing declining energy use over time, electrical energy use over time, which is great. But, here's the big story here. So, once the, all the work started to happen, you can see, we hit a new low in the summertime, despite the construction that was going on. And then, this dotted line represents what the five-year average was in the past, so this might be what we could expect to see going forward. In reality, we've seen this huge drop, so a 46% drop in electrical usage, you know, comparing December of 2018 to the five-year average previously. And, we're seeing a similar drop here at the Virgin's Elementary School. Again, this is the five-year average versus reality here, is a 41% drop. And, we're seeing smaller drops at Addison and Ferrisburg. Addison has already done a fair amount of work, and, you know, each one of these dropped about 2% over what we would expect to see in the average. We think that there's still probably more opportunity at Ferrisburg, especially because there's still some ongoing commissioning and things going on with the controls as part of the LED lighting, which couldn't be done last summer, because Ferrisburg was hosting a lot of the summer programs and that sort of thing. But, anyway, this is good news, and we're tracking this sort of thing closely, and we're hoping to see, you know, similar savings, well, maybe not quite that big, but we're hoping to see savings in fuel usage as well, going forward. But, partly through the year, we don't have that data yet.
So, as we can see here, I mean, just in energy usage, this has been a big improvement in the system. By all accounts, the comfort of particularly, again, the high school, is greatly improved. It is, it is an ongoing process, you know, as Ken Sullivan, our stalwart facilities manager, has, as the year has progressed, there have been things that emerge, because we've installed an awful lot of new systems. But, again, I think that, up to this point, the project has succeeded beyond our expectations. So, I have one more thing that I want to talk about before turning it over to Sue, which is to explain what our budget objectives were in, when we asked for the development of the FY '20 budget that you'll be voting on next Tuesday. It was, we were really concerned to maintain the level of the school, the programs at the school. So, our budget objectives were to maintain intervention, staff, and programs, to continue to meet multi-tiered level of support, that we maintained all the programs that we're currently offering, that we, that we are committed to high-quality staffing. And, you know, what does high-quality staffing mean? For us, it means that there is support for professional development, that there's ongoing in-service trainings, and that there are salaries that are in line with our region, and competitive compensation packages. And, that we, you know, continue to have investments to improve student outcomes that are in alignment with our district vision. Which I can read to you right here, because I know you guys can't see it. "We envision a kind collaborative and creative community for all that nurtures a diverse and accessible learning environment. Students will flourish as critical thinkers and productive citizens cultivating resilience in an ever-changing world." These are, it's a fairly, you know, broad and ambitious vision, and so, our goal is to maintain programs that can help the school enact. So, let me turn it over to Sue to talk about our budget.
Thank you. So, we have a few proposed changes from fiscal year 19, and these are the areas of savings that we were able to budget without impacting student programming, as Tom said, that was one of our main focus. So, we have reduced two positions in this proposed budget through attrition, or retirement, sorry. As well as another 1.1 combined FTE by basically reducing a number of other positions that weren't needed in as large of amount, for the reason of the declining enrollment, which actually, you can see here, the district enrollment history in this graph, you can see that, you know, compared to a decade ago, our enrollment is significantly lower, although, if you look over the past three years, it is remaining relatively stable at this point. Additional savings, we were able to realize in energy and maintenance costs of our facilities due to the facility work that had been done over the summer. So, this chart shows our budget history. This is actually on page 46 of your booklet, if you want to look in one that might be able to see the numbers in. This shows our history of budgets, the past four years, which is since the unification. You can see that this current budget is proposing a 4.89% increase in our local expenditures. The local revenues are down 3.89%, that's that red number in the second and last column there, which of course gives the net local ed spending a higher increase, that's 6.83%. Our equalized pupil number, which is provided to us by the state, I'll talk about that in a little bit as well, we're down at the time of this, the information that we had at this publication of our booklet here, anyway, we were down 17 equalized pupils from the previous fiscal year. So, that resulted in actually an 8.73% increase in the per pupil expenditure. That is the percentage that you'll see on your ballot when you go to vote, that's the one that we're required to put on there, is the per pupil increase. So, a couple points about that percentage. First of all, it is estimated based upon the equalized pupil number that we get from the state, which is not yet finalized. So, that percentage may change, and there's other, there's other variables at the state level that also could potentially change that. In fact, last year, we proposed a fairly similar increase, and it actually ended up being not, it was even a decrease in some of the towns, I believe. So, not to say that that, that that will happen again, it would be great, but, but just to know that that 8.73 is not set in stone, that is just an estimate, an estimate, given the information that we have right now. So, but remember, the proposed increase in the actual expenditures is 4.89%. And, I just want to point out, if you look over time here, that the three-year average growth in our expenditures is 2.17%. So, if you look back from fiscal year 17 to 18, our expenditures increased just 1.68%. And then, the current budget that we're operating right now is actually slightly lower than the fiscal year 18 budget was. So, if you look at the average over the three, well, four years, the three years changed, it's 2.17% average growth over that time, which actually, the CPI right now, for this current year is 2.7%, so, we're below that. Alright, so the reason we're proposing the 4.89% increase this year in expenditures is because of increased costs. We have, our transportation busing contract is actually increasing 13% this year, from last, from the current year to this fiscal year 20, it will be increasing 13%. We're in year three of a five-year contract with the bus company, there's really only one bus company that we can contract with. So, next year, for fiscal year 21, the increase will only be 3%, but this current year, it's jumping 13%. Employee health insurance costs are increasing 11%, and we have other contracted expenses and salaries that are also increasing. We're actually in negotiations right now with the teachers and the support staff, so we have a budgeted amount in there. We actually, again, that's an estimate. So, basically, those expenses, those three or four expenses that I mentioned make up a very large portion of our budget. So, we were not able to get the budget below this $22,100, wait, $22,139,341. We were not able to get below that number without impacting student programming. If you want to join Xfinity, I'll hook you up. Alright, this slide shows what our anticipated revenue sources are, this is on page 48 of your booklet. It basically breaks it out into the ed spending, which is $18,477,38, that's the blue. The special state funding and other local revenues are the red and the green, those come to $3,232,111. And then, the per pupil is the surplus from our fiscal year 18, that we're going to be applying to the fiscal year 20 proposed budget, and that is $430,192. The next two slides are on page 51 of your book. This slide shows the relationship between the budget and the amount of taxes to be raised. On the next slide, I'm going to walk you through the tax calculation itself, but I want you to know, before we get to that slide, that there are several numbers used in that calculation that are provided to us by the state, that we have no control locally over. So, these numbers are out of our control, and they're also subject to change. So, we have the forecasted fiscal year 20 homestead yield, the forecasted fiscal year 20 income yield, the non-residential rate, the education spending threshold, and the equalized pupil count. Those are all numbers that are used in the calculation of our tax rates, that are determined at the state level. So, how is the tax rate determined? Well, basically, we have, when we come up with budget for the district, we come up with this total expenditure, the $22,139,341, that I just talked about, that's the 4.89% increase over the current budget. And then, we have less than local revenue, yeah, less the local revenue, less the surplus balance that we applied, and that brings us to $18,477,038. And that's where our control ends. So, that's what we're proposing as a budget for the district. So, the way the tax rate is calculated is you actually divide that by the number of equalized pupils, which is given to us by the state, I mean, it's based on the number of pupils we have, but it's not the actual number of pupils, it's a number that's equated at the state. So, we divide the $18 million by the 962, that gives you the net ed spending per equalized pupils.
We don't have .13 pupils.
Well, we do, though. That's what they say. So, you take that number, the 19,204, and you divide that by the property yield number that's provided by the state, and then we actually, which is that $10,666, then we actually have a six-cent credit, because we're in the third year of our unification. So, when we unified, that was one of the carrots, was that we would have 10-cent credit the first year, 8-cent the second year, 6 cents the third year. In fiscal year 21, we have 4 cents, in fiscal year 22, we get 2-cent credit. So, you apply the 6-cent credit, and that brings our estimated unionized residential tax rate, this is without your CLA, to $1.74 and 1/2 cents. Then, the towns, we'll each apply the, your own town-specific CLA, that's the common level appraisal that's done at the town. And, again, this is all estimated, because these numbers aren't finalized yet, but the estimated increase, given these numbers that we have over the current fiscal year 19, actual union tax rate is 9.23 cents. That is what I have, and I'm going to hand it over to Christina to finish off. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Christina Macklin, I'm the clerk of the district school board, so, I'm a Mac user, I may have a problem here, so.
That is Mac.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Down cursors.
Where is it? Ooh, bottom right, bottom right. Wait, there we go. So, the budget recap, what we're looking at is a 4.89% budget increase, as Sue said, due to transportation, health insurance, salaries, and reduced revenue as a result of declining enrollment. We've got a 2.17% three-year average growth, a 3.89% revenue decrease, and our anticipated tax increase rate of .0923 cents over FY '19.
Down error.
Down error, we went backwards. So, I have the pleasure of basically reading the ballots to you, trying to explain this. Article three, shall the voters of Addison Northwest School District approve the Board of School District Directors to expend $22,139,341, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the incoming fiscal year. It is estimated this proposed budget, if approved, will result in projected education spending of $19,204.31 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 8.73% higher than the current year. Article four, shall the voters of Addison Northwest School District authorize the assignment of $50,000 pursuant to the statute to basically fund our capital improvement fund that we have, that we will try to do every year. Shall the voters, Article five, of the Addison Northwest School District authorize the school for board of directors to borrow money to pay, or to, to years for the payment of school district expenses pending receipt of payments from the state education fund and property tax receipts from member towns by issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from date of issuance. Article Six, shall the voters of the Addison Northwest School District authorize the Board of School Directors to give notice that in lieu of distributing the school district annual report line mail within ten days of our annual meeting, it shall give at least thirty days' notice of the availability of such report by inclusion in the warning of the district's annual meeting commencing with the district's two hundred, two thousand and nineteen meeting. Article Seven, shall the voters of the school district authorize distribution of salaries for the directors and other, other elected fish officers of the district pursuant to statute. So the Board of Directors, eight hundred and fifty dollars each, Treasurer, three thousand dollars, the Chair of Board of Directors, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the Clerk, one hundred and fifty dollars. And last, is that the last article? Yes. Article Eight, shall the voters authorize the amendment of Article Eleven of the Addison Northwest School District Articles of Agreement, striking the current Article Eleven language in its entirety and replacing it with. The unified district Board of Directors shall propose annual budgets in accordance with the statute. The vote on the annual budget shall be conducted by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen DSA. The vote on all public questions shall be conducted by Australian ballot, except the vote on the public questions that will be a floor vote at this meeting. Authorization for stipends to be paid district officers, including the directors, clerk and treasurer. Authorization for the Board of Directors to borrow money in anticipation of revenue, and then authorization for the Board of Directors to electronically distribute the annual report. So what that basically means is, instead of having eight different articles that you have to vote on this year, you'll be down to two articles, I think, or three at the next year. So, there is language left out of our unification articles that causes you to have to vote on eight articles this time around. Did I explain that okay?
Yeah. And if people remember, we had to have that special vote.
Yeah, and we did have to have a whole special vote. There you have it.
I think it's just the district website and.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The voting.
Oh, yes. Please vote.
Please vote, please vote, yes. We did have to have that special election last year, the special balloting, because it was brought to our attention that all of our public articles, according to unification agreement right now, need to vote, be voted by Australian ballot. And so that's the purpose of the last article. It's fine, we can still continue to have them all at Australian ballot, and if that article doesn't pass, that's the way we'll keep it. But some of those items, the, the three items that are mentioned in there had traditionally been done by the floor, you know, from floor votes here. And some of them are a little more, a little more open to conversation if you have it here versus at the Australian ballot. So, that's all. That's all we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Open the floor to questions. Yes?
I, I don't want to hash over the transportation contract, but I just have some questions about it. So you said it's a five-year gig, and we're in year three of five. Now, the fact that you're telling me there's a thirteen percent increase this year or a three percent increase next year, for each of the five years, was there a negotiated increase? And if so, that seems, I do contracting for a living for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, and I would have expected something smoother than something like that. So I'm just wondering if you can shed a little light. I'm not here to harangue you about that. I just want to understand, because it seems wacky.
And I'm not sure if there's anyone in this room that was here at the time that contract.
And aren't you all led that you can say, no, really?
But, but I'm sure that probably Elizabeth.
I can tell you that when we looked at the contract, it was signed just before I was employed with the district, and definitely a whole year before she was in. The first three years of the contract show that thirteen percent increase, and then the last two years of it show the three percent increase. I do not know why it was developed in, you know, that manner, or.
Are those, are those sort of increases standard across other transportation agreements? They seem really high, and when I think about labor costs and fuel costs, I'm not quite sure we're seeing a thirteen percent bump every year. So I'm just curious.
I think there are other districts that are having some issues with the, the, the large size increases between, but those districts are ones that aren't into a contract, so they're negotiating a new contract. So they're talking about how large the increases are that are being negotiated. But I don't know that any of them are necessarily a thirteen and then a three percent.
I guess I'm also a little stunned that you would enter into an agreement that, that is that long. So just sort of another observation. Five years is insane, because you cannot predict that for in the future. And now we've sort of been encumbered with these astronomical costs over which none of us have any control right now. So, I appreciate the answers. I think it really sucks, but okay.
Also, also what you're saying is, I mean, Vetcha has this over her barrel, right? I mean, who, is there another company?
Can you term with cause? Can you term without cause?
Well, it's funding another company.
You can terminate without cause and renegotiate. I, I'm sure you've got term with and without cause provisions in the contract. There probably is no cause right now, other than you cost too much, but.
I don't think anyone else did in the contract last time.
No one else did, no.
Is there any more questions? Yes, sir.
Some of the larger expenditures, just because I haven't been to any of the meetings, I'm just curious, account twenty-one hundred in particular, just what it is, you know, what the support services are. It's a very large increase. It's very significant, unless I'm missing something.
Can you refer to the page you're on there?
It's, uh, page forty-six, budget expenditures.
Oh, I know. From nineteen, from two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty.
Are you talking about?
Says account number twenty-one hundred, support services, students. There's quite a few on this page, but that's one of them.
That's the one you're, you're questioning?
That's one of them, yeah. I'm just curious what they, what the rationale for a three hundred thirty-nine thousand increase was, what it did, you know?
The twenty-one hundred is one of those support services to students that typically includes the interventionists that are out in the schools. We discovered that some of the way those interventionists were being coded in our district budgets was the incorrect location. And so some of that is a move of all of those interventionists to the proper code, and not necessarily a three hundred thirty-one thousand increase.
Where were they listed before?
They were under eleven hundred in a direct service.
Oh, so that's where the reduction was taken there.
Right. But then you have increases for salaries and things like that in that eleven hundred that offset that. But yes, they were movement, not increases for the twenty-one hundred people.
And account number twenty-four, one zero, Office of Principal Services.
What's the percentage increase in that?
That one was like, not as big, but it's still like.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's probably, that's salaries and benefits on all your, not just your principals, but it's also any administrative staff working in the principals' offices at the schools. That's who those people are. So if you're having an eleven percent increase in your health insurance, and then you're having salary increases and other benefit increases, that's where that's coming from.
Yeah, there was other ones that were bigger increases now. These are just.
It's hard, because the salaries are all embedded, embedded into each function code, not necessarily, you know, we did it by department instead of by type of expense. If that makes sense.
Are there any more questions?
I, I, I'll pose it as a question if you want, but I'll also make a statement. One, thank you to the, to the, to Sue and Christina and Tom for their presentation. And I would just like to let everybody know, as a matter of transparency, it's not like they just decided to choose some things to, no, 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 that they just decided to choose some things to present on, and they left out some other things, and they're trying to like navigate like a really great story. It's not, it's not like that the law requires that presentation include these items, and our policies require that. And this presentation, in fact, did meet the law's requirements in the board presentation. I just want to make sure that that's said. It's important.
No, I'm just trying to.
Oh, no, no, thank you.
I'm asking, that's all.
No, no, thank you.
I don't know. I mean, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Are there any more questions? Yes.
What's the, how does the what if play out if the budget doesn't get passed? So what are the steps after that? Because there's a very real possibility that it won't pass because of the increase. For things that are in large part out of our control, but what comes next if that happens? And what's your timing?
So this, this is the budget, that is the lowest budget that we can present without impacting student programming. So if this budget doesn't pass, we will need to determine where to make further cuts to reduce it and put it back out for another vote. And it probably would be in late March, or I'm sorry.
I would think early April. And that's if we would have a pretty quick turnaround. We would have to have another public meeting once we got some direction, right, from the board to rework something, bring it back, get approval. We would then have to have another public meeting then of that, before then, a number of days then have to incur before we would have another vote. So I, I think early April would be the soonest we could, you know, if all those things lined up perfectly.
I, so I wanted to clarify what you're saying. What you're saying is if this budget doesn't pass, then we would have to, you would have to present a budget that would impact the level of education, would decrease our, our standard of education and our level of education.
It would decrease, likely it would decrease offerings. Yes.
Okay.
I mean, sometimes I just present the same number again and see if it goes. You know, I mean, I'm just saying.
That is absolutely another option, yes.
Or change it slightly in some way. If you, it's hard, because you don't know what the public is looking for necessarily. When they vote no, they, they could vote no for a very different reason.
Yeah. They're not sure why.
Right.
But it's also expensive each time we go out to vote.
Yes, sir, you're back?
Hi, Chris K. Hart. I was just wondering if you guys could speak to the two positions that are being, what areas of instruction laws are from?
We can?
Yeah.
Special ed. What is a special ed?
It's a support person. A support staff person. So they aren't two teaching physicians, that means, a different position.
Yeah, if you guys speak up.
Sorry. One is a special ed physician, and one is a support staff physician. So they're folks that are retiring, and we're just not replacing them. We'll absorb those duties in other ways. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Looking at page forty-seven, line twelve hundred, direct construction, special education shows a reduction of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I'm interested in understanding what's driving that reduction, and whether it in part addresses the question from the gentleman earlier about increases in support services. Is that one of the places where it's offset?
So it's part as a retirement, which is almost the majority of that, and the other is a reduction of a support staff person in my department in part.
Apparently, I'm full of questions, and I should have come into the board meeting. So from a voting standpoint, does each town need to pass the budget independently, or now that we're one big spanking happy family, it's just a majority across all five towns?
The votes are co-mangled, yes.
Okay.
Anyone around the corner there need to ask a question? It's getting awfully quiet.
Any other questions?
Yes?
All right. So, not to like bring up dead horses or anything, but, um, at a number of school board meetings, there's been questions about the schedule change, and I was wondering what the school board had done to address student, parent, and community concerns around the schedule
So, the schedule change is something that is an administrative, an administrative, under the administration's oversight. So the school board has, has asked the, the folks who have concerns to speak with the administration and counselors to try to work through those concerns.
So the school board has just taken itself out of the mix? Is that what you're saying for now?
The, the, the school board doesn't, doesn't operate the schools, so we're.
So, can you just explain to me, so we, we talked to the administration, and we are still at impasse. What's our next step?
I mean, I, I'm not sure what the impasse is, but there, there's going to be an informational meeting tomorrow, specifically around the schedule. So maybe that could be a next step, to go and get more information or talk to people.
It feels like that we've been, administration has been telling us about the schedule change and change, and students have, at like, class meetings and stuff brought concerns to administration, and it feels like they haven't quite been listened to, is, I think, more is what is being said.
There's opposition to the schedule change that is not being addressed.
So have, have the people who have complaints, have they, have they spoken with the superintendent? Because if, if, you know, basically if you have a complaint, you're going to ask, you know, you're going to approach the, the teacher or the person that you have a problem with. If that doesn't work, then you would escalate that to a building administrator. And if you still have more questions, you would go to the superintendent. That's sort of the, that's sort of the process that's laid out by policy. And then, you know, and then the board actually would step in if there was a decision that was made by the superintendent that, for some reason.
But the board oversees the superintendent. The superintendent is the top, there's no other, who, who, who's the superintendent's boss?
The board.
The board.
Right.
Again, I want to remind you, it's not a school board meeting we're having tonight. It is the annual meeting, and to hear the reports, and to gather information to decide how you're going to vote on next Tuesday, March fifth. So are there any more questions about the annual report? Yes, sir?
Hi, Tom. Anthony Dupree from Malton. I have a question. This comes from the report. It says the transition, this is page twenty-eight, the transition from assessment-based reporting system to a proficiency-based system will demand you reform many of your hallmarks of high school academic life, such as honor roll, class running, and other qualities of academic success. And this goes along with the concern about scheduling, I think. I have a son who, this has already happened at the middle school level, where we've gone to proficiency-based grading. And to, to me, it's been difficult to try to figure out. It's harder for me to understand, I think, that as a parent, I think generally, people understand a hundred percent rating, and, and this, when I go onto the, the website that's, that gives us information as parents, junk load, I see a bunch of proficiency things that are listed, and it like really gets into the weeds as far as, you know, does your kid know about a rational number, and, and all of these different things. But it doesn't convey to me the type of information that I, I'm accustomed to as a parent and that I understand. And I've been reading a little bit about concerns about proficiency-based education, and I, I, I feel that, that looking, the, the principal has given us a timeframe for when things have happened with this, and it seemed like the act was passed in two thousand and thirteen, and then a lot of time went by, there was. There was an attempt at a scheduling committee and that sort of fizzled out. But then all of a sudden, boom, it was like, this was taken, this fall, it was going to happen. Boom, boom, boom. And I really feel like there has not been enough input from the community on this. And so consistent with trying to stay on focus tonight, that I thought it was appropriate to bring that up, that we have this in the report here, that this really appears to be a direction that the school, the school district is going in. And I wonder if that's really pushing us too fast in a direction. I think that we're certainly welcome that there be more input from the community. I fear that we may have, an administration that's very knowledgeable about this and really pushing it, but I really fear that there's a lack of input from the community on this. And I would welcome the board looking at this at their next meeting and considering. I understand what you're saying, that we need to bring our concerns to the administration. But you're our elected officials, you're our only voice. And if the administration has decided that this is what's happening, regardless of the number of voices that rise up and express concern. And I think that our administration, that they're doing a fine job and, you know, looking at past years and stuff, I think that things are good. But I just fear that this right here has really been pushed. And I think that there's a swelling in the community of concern about this and would ask the board to address that at their next meeting.
And thank you for your input. Is there anyone else? More questions, concerns? If not, I'll ask for a vote to accept the report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, here's to a passed. I'll now ask for a motion to recess until March 5, at what time you will take, you will have the opportunity to vote by Australian ballot. Yes, ma'am?
Make the motion.
Could you give your name, please?
Uh, sorry, I'm the candidate.
Do I have a second?
A second. Sue Rukowski.
That's not an abatable motion, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you for coming this evening.
Don't forget to vote, everybody. Thank you for coming.